And when I dry fit and all I did was dry fit the parts that I was throwing and toweling, I didn't assemble the whole thing.
I'm just waiting for Bill. I'm going to call the City Council Caucus meeting to order for December 9th, 2013. If the clerk would read item number one for original consideration.
Item number one for original consideration, an ordinance to amend Chapter 230-2 of the Code of the City of Schenectady, introduced only with a resolution calling for a public hearing to amend 230-2 of the Code of the City of Schenectady related to consolidation of residential lots.
This was discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number two.
Item number two, an ordinance to amend Chapter 144 of the Code of the City of Schenectady, introduced only with a resolution calling for a public hearing to amend Chapter 144 of the Code of the City of Schenectady related to an inclusion of a dog enumeration fee.
Also discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number three.
Item number three, a resolution authorizing the implementation and funding in the first instance, 100 percent of the federal aid state marshally program aid eligible cost of a transportation federal aid project and appropriating funds therefore.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number four.
A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Finance to reimburse the Rose Garden Restoration Committee for certain expenses.
Also discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number five.
Item number five, a resolution authorizing the Mayor to enter into an agreement with June Polterak to provide concession services at the Schenectady Municipal Golf Course.
This was discussed in committee, I assume you want to roll call? Okay. All right, item number six.
Item number six, a resolution authorizing the settlement of a claim by Mary Lynn Lane.
Discussed in claims without objection on consent. Item number seven.
Item number seven, a resolution authorizing the settlement of a claim by Kevin Duffy.
Also discussed in claims committee without objection on consent. Item number eight.
Item number eight, a resolution authorizing the settlement of a claim by Gail Pross.
Also discussed in claims without objection on consent. And then we have one item for unanimous consent.
Item 8A, a resolution calling for a public hearing to authorize the approval of the budget for the Upper Union Street bid.
I'll entertain a motion to move this to the agenda. Okay, Ms. Parrazo, seconded by Mr. Riggi, all in favor? Aye. And then a motion to move this to the consent agenda. Okay, Mr. Riggi, seconded by Ms. Brucker, all in favor? Aye. Okay. All right. If there's nothing else to come before the City Council Caucus, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Ms. Parrazo, seconded by Ms. Porterfield, all in favor? Aye. All right, I will now call the City Council meeting to order for December 9th, 2013, and ask you to rise for the invocation by Reverend Owens of New Bethel Community Church of God in Christ.
Let us bow our heads. Merciful God our Father, it is once more and again that we humble ourselves in your divine presence. We come this evening acknowledging you for who you are. You are our King, our Lord, our God and our Father, the one that sustains and protects us. And oh God, we realize and recognize that we have fallen short of your perfection. We have said, done, and thought things that are not like you. But as we confess these faults, we ask that you would create within us a clean heart and renew the right spirit. And God, as we supplicate you on this evening, we ask oh God that you would give wisdom, knowledge, and understanding to all those who are responsible for the procedures, the policies, and the resolutions that govern this city. Give them what's required oh God, that the people of this city may be affected in a positive way. We ask that you would continue to bless the Mayor and the President Council and all of the city members, city council members oh God. We ask these things in Jesus' name and we claim that it is so. Amen.
I'm going to call on Antonio Civitella to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and invisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right, if the clerk would call the roll.
Ms. Parrazo? Ms. Porterfield? Mr. Erickson? Mr. Riggi? Ms. Brucker? Ms. Blanchard is excused. Ms. King?
Present.
All right, tonight we are going to continue our monthly review of the economic strengths which enrich the city of Schenectady. Tonight we welcome TransFinder, founded in 1988 and headquartered in Schenectady, New York. TransFinder celebrated its 25th year in business in 2013. As a national leader in student transportation management systems and services, TransFinder products allow school districts across North America and the Caribbean to manage bus routes and provide safe and efficient student transportation. Antonio Civitella, founder, president, and CEO of TransFinder Corporation, recently announced that the company has experienced tremendous growth in recent years, expanding the organization to over 70 professional employees. TransFinder has been recognized as one of INC 5000's fastest-growing private companies each year for the past seven years. Schenectady County legislator Marty Finn, Chair of the Legislature's Committee on Economic Development, said, "This fast-growing company could have located their beautiful new $7 million headquarters anywhere in the region." However, TransFinder worked closely with the city of Schenectady and the county to keep this homegrown tech company here in Schenectady, creating new jobs and bringing new investment to our community. In addition, TransFinder will be expanding to Lower State Street by developing a Business Accelerator program at 263 State Street, which will cultivate talent and technology businesses in the high-tech sector by encouraging the startup and growth of related businesses. The total project cost is $750,000, some of which is funded by a regional council grant. Antonio Civitella is a graduate of Mount Pleasant High School and Siena College and was recently recognized as a Schenectady Petron by Mayor McCarthy at the company's ribbon-cutting in October 2013. We very much appreciate his being here tonight to be, to make a presentation as part of Schenectady's economic strengths. Everyone, this is Antonio Civitella. Thank you for being here.
Good evening. One of my topic, of course, here tonight is how a local company is expanding and how we're thinking, how do we go global at this point? Next screen, please. Little overview that I don't want to repeat again, but sometimes good things need to be repeated, of course. We were actually were a startup company here in Schenectady 25 years ago, and this year we celebrated our 25th year in business. We are a market leader in providing softer solutions to school districts across North America and the Caribbean. Of course, as we mentioned, we just completed our new corporate, $7 million corporate headquarters, moved to 440 State Street, which is, of course, right next to Proctor's, just in case anybody forgot where it's located. Currently, we have 75 highly skilled employees and we plan to grow around 125. The buildings actually can't house that many people. As we mentioned in my introduction, and thank you very much for the kind words, we have experienced double-digit growth and there is one thing that we could say about ourselves, how we're growing, but when you look at other companies that recognize us, such as INC 500, they, at this time, they've recognized us seven years in a row that we're the fastest-growing private companies in the United States, and we're located right here in Schenectady. Of course, as the increase in market share, we're now considered the largest privately-held company solely dedicated to school districts and their success, or transportation and their communication. Other things that we did this year is, in honor of my father, we awarded the first Celeste Civitella Scholarship to a graduating senior Schenectady high school, which is going, whether they're going to either math or computer field. So we want to, want to help local students to, to do better, and of course, we recognize that technology is a huge shortage, so we're trying to promote students to enroll in science and math, of course. Next slide, please. And of course, this is our rendering of 440 State Street. It's pretty much, other than the landscape and around and the people, which are computer-generated, it resembles nearly that image. So if you do have a chance, please come by, ring the doorbell perhaps, or send us an email, or go on Facebook and say that you like the locations. We had a grand opening on October 10th and we had several hundreds of people walk through the facility. We really wanted to show off how it's a state-of-the-art technology center, and we really want to be at, at the level where Google and Microsoft and Facebook are at the West Coast. We want to do something right in Schenectady. Next slide, please. Other things that we want to, we want to let you know that last year, we initiated a program with SCCC to offer online workforce development classes to train students and reputation personnel in our business, of course. Through a SUNY grant, we delivered, developed a curriculum using our software. We offered three courses to our clients in their state. One is proficiency, two, efficiency, using our software, and three, how to be a manager, a better manager using our software and our technology. Following the successful completion of these courses, students actually took an actual exam, and each received a certificate signed both by, by TransFinder and SCCC. Next screen, please. As we mentioned, this is really a map of the United States, and we, we really take pride of where our clients are located. At this point, considering 1,500 school districts in North America, we are in about 10 percent of school districts throughout this region, and New York State alone are about 50 percent. So 50 percent of school districts use, in New York State, use our software. So this map, of course, you could see the concentration of the, the New England area and of course, the Northeast, and there's pockets in Texas which are growing areas, and there's large school districts around Houston that have seven high schools in one school district, and they have 150,000 students in that single school district. So of course, you can imagine how large some of these operations. We have the entire state of Maine exclusively using our software, so that was a great success from us a few years ago. And from really a lot of, several opportunities are calling upon us at this point, that they're asking us to, to visit other parts of the world, so we're expecting to be global, not necessarily by our choice, but really from what's going on in the market space. Next, please. And as I mentioned, that as we're, as we're considered an expert here in this country, other parts of the world have asked us to be guest speakers. We went to China now two times, and we went to Dubai this year. They recognize that in the United States, we are really considered a golden standard, so how can other parts of the world benefit from companies like TransFinder to bring the golden standards there? So for us, it was an honor, but also we expect a really large business to come out of these, these small, you know, big regions, of course. In China, let me tell you about China, in comparison to the United States, in our industry, we have about 400,000 school buses travel roads every single day. In China, there's an expectation of being about 1.5 million to 2 million of school buses on a road in the next three to five years. Why is this important? Because they recognize that education is key, so as we recognized in this country many years ago, and part of the education is also making sure that kids get to school, right? We don't want to give a student the opportunity, if they live too far from school, or it's a dangerous intersection, well, let's drive them to school. So we recognized this many, many years ago. Other parts of the world realized that that's part of the education, so we're, we're proud of, of being invited to these events. Next slide, please. And as we mentioned, in effort to really, to spark an interest throughout this region of the startups, and of course, promote an attractiveness of doing business in the downtown Schenectady, we are starting an accelerator. And you've heard probably this term accelerator, most likely you've heard more incubator. And the reason why I like the accelerator better than an incubator, it's more of a faster pace. An incubator could be two, three, four years, and really nothing come out of it. So an accelerator, it's more, you have a precise idea, you have a precise goal, and we could help those companies come to fruition. The, the, the nice thing about it is that if, as we start accelerator in the Lower State Street, which of course, we all know it's, you guys are all preparing for the groundwork of really the resurgence of this whole area to, to renew like you did the upper side where we're, I'm located on 440. And we also know that in really in Schenectady, it really is the birthplace of innovation. Let's face it, with the, of Schenectady having one of the first R&amp;D from GE and other companies. So this is really a hub for creativity and technology. Let me tell you, last week I was asked to speak at an event in Troy. I had a lot of fun there. Of course, there's about 80 leaders in the Capitol District who were asked, and they asked me to speak. Few days before the event, most people had about a couple of months to prepare, I only had a few days. So I'm thinking, how can I be any different? So I spoke about, well, what do I really believe? I really believe there's actually three things that companies in this region should really think about. It's, and I was trying to be catchy, the, the word of the year is called pivot. Everyone's, you know, everyone's using the word pivot. So I thought about, well, how can I talk about how we go from technology and pivot to farming? Right? So I was trying to be a little bit funny about that. So I said, well, how can we talk about sowing the right seeds, right? So how do you, as a successful company, you have to decide, how do you decide what are the right seeds to sow? And then two, I talked about how you should grow where you're planted. Of course, I talked about my story, I'm, I'm from Schenectady, and I talked about how it's important that you grow where you're planted. And three, of course, is where I spun everything around, and there's a huge headline from the Capital District Business Review, took my headline, and they used it on Friday morning to talk about the event. They talked about chicken, it said, I mentioned about, it's important to raise more chickens. What does that mean in business? It really means that we need to accelerate a business by attracting more people, right? Raising chickens, you want to attract people, really, if you wait for an egg to hatch, it's really too slow. So if we go get more chickens in this area, this is how we're going to do it. And how we're going to do this is one way that I talked about this area, and it's really the capital region, is really a fountain of youth. Why is it a fountain of youth? There's all these colleges and universities have all these students. Well, guess what? That is the true fountain of youth. We need to figure out how to keep them in here, and it's really part of, part of the technology and the startup is to keep a lot of these students right here. So that was my, my pitch, and of course, most people liked it, they used my chicken story as a headline. Next screen, please. Other parts, of course, we expect to really take two different directions in the company. We have an education leg, which is, we believe that there's other parts in education that we could expand. And of course, with logistics, there's other parts that we can expect, expand our, our knowledge and of course, our expertise. So those are future areas, and of course, we expect to be in the downtown Schenectady for many decades, and of course, we want to be in both lower and upper State Street. And that's my finale, if you could go next. This is our, we just sent out our happy holidays cards to all of our clients, and there's about, I think we sent out about 2,500 of these today. So I want to share with you, happy holidays in Akron. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak and about our success, and, and really, without the help of Schenectady, a lot of people in this room, we really wouldn't be where we are today. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
If you, if there's some questions, I'd be happy to answer if there's any questions.
Any questions from the council members? Well, we, I think many of us got a chance to visit your building when you had your ribbon-cutting, and it's a beautiful building, and obviously it's a wonderful company, so thank you.
On Friday, we were received a prestigious award, this is before we would send the PowerPoint. On Friday, we received the Best Place to Work Award from Business Review, so that was a great, it was a great award, so we want to thank everybody.
Congratulations. Thank you. All right, we have no out-of-order resolutions, we have no public hearings tonight, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from November 25th. Ms. Brucker? Seconded by Mr. Riggi, all in favor? Aye. Okay. Communications and petitions.
Communications presented to the City Council for Monday, December 9th, 2013. Under the category of official from the Mayor, a list of appointments dated December 9th, 2013. Under general, there are none, and there are no petitions.
Committee reports. Any council member committee report? Okay. Then we will move on to privilege of the floor related to the legislative agenda. I have five people who've signed up to speak. The first one is Fred Mullins.
Good evening. My name is Fred Mullins, I live at 110 Western Parkway here in the city. I'm here to address you regarding the concession at the golf course. I presently work part-time at the golf course as a seasonal employee in the pro shop, and I've been there since 2006. Since that time, I've witnessed unprecedented growth in our golf course and the, and the revenues that it generates for the city. The popularity is, the golf course itself is one of the jewels of the city, and it has been for many years. This is, the growth that we've experienced has occurred despite a general downturn in the golfer industry nationally. The growth we've experienced can be attributed to many factors. One is our location, we're pretty centrally located. The golf course itself has a natural beauty. We have moderate pricing as far as green fees and the restaurant and beverages and so forth. But the major reason is that it's run by a team of professionals. And when I say that, I mean that. We work together to offer the best product in the area, and if you ask any golfers, you'll find that's true. This team includes Mike Sesny, who is in charge of the maintenance, and his crew, and they do an excellent job maintaining the course. Matt Daly, who's present tonight, and his pro shop crew, which I'm a member, but, which tries to deliver a great golf experience, and also Ms. Polterick and her restaurant crew. They deliver excellent food and beverage at moderate prices. The three entities work together as a team to provide the best bang for your buck in the area. With the exception of one year, Ms. Polterick has been at the golf course since 1995. She's revered by her clientele, the staff, the patrons, all, you know, love what they do there, and we want to maintain them. I urge you to keep this successful combination together. We work well as a team, all three crews, and we want you to maintain that contract with them, if you can do that. And one last thing, we also cordially invite any members of the council who would like to patronize a golf course to come up there, even if you don't golf. We'll show you around, come and, you know, have some of the beverages and the food, and we'll show you the course. Better yet, learn how to golf. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Doug, Doug Darlin?
How you doing, everybody? I'm called here to, to my support at the current management to have in the restaurant. Basically, I've seen for 35 years to 40 years, people go in and out of that place and not do with this team that's there now. They, they put a good menu together at fair prices, and if you go up there at night and after golf leagues, people are actually sitting down having dinner. You've never seen that in previous concession errors. And this is why I urge you to keep this team up there, because they're doing more good than you can believe in just creating harmony, which means a lot. And people go up for recreation, they want to enjoy themselves, and that's what they're being able to do there. And remember, they're doing this with a facility that was bought, built when Fred Floodstone was a kid. I mean, to get in order to that place, you have Lomond Hill and everything else, that makes it very difficult, and yet they're making a go of it. That shows the loyalty of the people that they've cultivated as customers. All I got to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. John Mackey?
Hello. My name's John Mackey, I'm a city resident. I'm here to speak about the golf course concession also. You know, I've been playing Schenectady Muni for probably 45 years, since I was eight years old. I grew up playing there, I worked in the pro shop for Bob Haggerty throughout the 70s, and I've worked other places in the golf business, so I'd like to state I know the golf business, I know the municipal golf course, it's probably my favorite place on earth. And over the last 45 years, I've seen a lot of vendors come and go. And over the last seven years, June Polterak has been there, and she's provided excellent service, and I think she's been a great asset to not only the golf course, but to the city because of the prices and everything that these fellows have just talked about. I do believe there's been increased amount of play there, so you've had an increase in greens fees revenue, outing revenue, et cetera. Outings are big up there, they're good revenue generators, and I know for a fact, June has been, at least in part, a force in getting more outings up there. Reason being is her price structure is affordable, and a lot of guys have told me, the reason they have their outings up there is because of that favorable price structure. I hope we don't lose sight that up at the golf course, it's a municipal golf course, and primarily, you have working-class people who patronize the place. So, you know, working class people don't have a lot of extra money for leisure time activities, and if you do put a higher bidder in there, I do believe you risk pricing yourself right out of the market, and you risk having the restaurant a ghost town again, as Dougie has stated. So I was privileged enough to attend your committee meeting last week. I realize that five council members have indicated they're in favor of retaining June. I do believe it's a good idea. I know that the two city employees oversee the day-to-day operation up there, have recommended June come back, as have the Golf Commission and many constituents who play the golf course, have notified you to keep her there. I think by doing so, it's sound economic decision, because June is in part a reason that the numbers for greens fees and overall profits are up, up there, and I think that's very good for the city as a whole, you know? Maybe more money in the general fund and so forth. So anything else I say is probably redox. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here. Good night.
Thank you very much. Jason Plank?
Madam President, City Council, Mayor Potem. Basically, it's on the golf course. What I had said five years ago is the same thing I'm saying here tonight. Don't care who the person is, you've got two qualified good people. But one of the things is, is the rent. When you're dealing with hospitality and everything else, rent is normally at 20 percent of the total gross sales. I have said that you guys have lost out nearly over $30,000 per year. You've got 26 weeks at bare minimum, and at $10,000 per week, that's about $260,000 at least, bare minimum, that she should be bringing in in gross sales. At 20 percent, they put at about $50,000, she's been paying in about $22,000 in rent. So you're losing out on that portion of it. Also too, is if you, most restaurants, when if you include in the rent, electricity and water and sewer and so forth, then that percentage will go up to about to the maximum 30 percent. So you need to take a look at what you're doing here, is it, when, when one of the city council members said, hey, we're losing $10,000 in revenue. Yeah, we're losing $10,000 in revenue. Because another person came in and said, yes, that's what I'll do. So we need to take a look at it. Another city council member said, oh, the numbers, the, the numbers of the ratings was skewed. And, you know, when you're going to weigh something out on which proposal is better than the other one, you can't, you can't take a scale and skew it towards one person that you want there. there. That's wrong. You need to take a look at it in a neutral position. And I'm glad that we got two great people that are qualified, but what's going to happen in three years? When they see the process today, that you turned around and skewed to the current proprietor that's already there, and that you're not willing to maximize the revenues? And when we're saying 20%, it doesn't mean that you're going to raise the prices at the golf course, okay? It doesn't mean you're going to raise the food prices, the drink prices, or anything else. It's that you're taking the 20%, you're taking what is legitimately there. A restaurant should be making either between 8% to 12% after all taxes of total gross sales. Your labor costs should be around 15%. Your food, your beverage should be around 20%. Your food cost at 25% of gross sales. This is all different things of food and beverage cost containment. So when you're asking, and then turn around and saying, we don't have the right to have access to the gross sales? No, it's a public place. We should have access to it, and we should know what the figures are. At least the city council should have all that information. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary McLean?
Good evening. My name is Mary McLean. I live in the city. From March 2012 through May 2013, the police were called 15 times to Clinton's Ditch regarding loud parties and fighting. The fighting incident led to an arrest. Clinton's Ditch is owned by one of the people who bid to provide services at the Schenectady Municipal Golf Course. The issue on tonight's agenda involves rental property owned by the city. The building is currently occupied. There is no intention on the part of the present tenant to vacate the building. The building isn't available for new tenancy because the present tenant wants to continue to run her business there, but her rental contract will expire soon. Ms. Poltrak has a proven track record. She has given the city no reason to deny her a new contract. Her contract should be renewed. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I have no one else signed up, so I'm going to close privilege of the floor related to the legislative agenda, and we'll move on to approval of the legislative agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Okay. Ms. Porterfield, seconded by Ms. Parazzo. All in favor? Aye. And then we have one roll call vote. Mr. Thorne, if you would call the vote.
Item number five, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with June Polterak to provide concession services at the Schenectady Municipal Golf Course.
You'll call the roll?
Motion.
Oh, okay, I need a motion, I'm sorry, to put this on the agenda? Okay, Ms. Brucker, seconded by Mr. Riggi. All in favor? Aye. All right, now the clerk can call the roll.
Ms. Parazzo?
So I've spoken a number of times about my feelings on this, and I'm not going to go through the finer points again, but for those of you who may not have been privy to my thought process on this, there was a letter to the editor printed in Friday, December 6th. So if you'd like to know the finer points, you can just reference that letter. But I feel like the contract process has been something that the council has been protecting and working on over the last, well, even before I got elected, so five years now that I've been sitting in council committee meetings, I've heard often, you know, why did we only get one bid? You know, let's look at the specifications. Let's make sure this is a fair process. Let's make sure we're inviting people to the table, all of those things. So I think when we go through the process as it stands, and we get two very equally qualified bidders, and one bid is far stronger than the other, but essentially, we choose the bidder that's in place because, as it's been kind of bandied around, if it ain't broke, or in proper English, if it's not broken, or if it isn't broken, we don't need to fix it. I think that erodes at our RFP process, and I'm concerned about that. I have no doubt that the current people in place do a great job. That has been said over and over and over again. I also don't have any doubt that the other proposal was submitted by people who are equally qualified and have been in the hospitality industry for a long time. It's not, I honestly do not care who runs the golf course concession, but I do care that we're protecting a process. And as I said in my letter, my suggestion is, if we want to keep Mrs. Poltrak in place, let's do away with the RFP process. Let's make it an unending contract that's, you know, breakable by either side at any time for any reason, and then when the contract is broken, let's go out to bid. Because when we're going out to bid, we have a stronger proposal, and we're going with what's comfortable and known at $10,000 less revenue, and as the gentleman said, in a building that Fred Flintstone built, also included in that proposal is capital investment and bricks and mortar improvement, then I think we're failing the process. So for that reason, and for that reason only, and for no bearing on Ms. Poltrak's ability to run the golf course, I have to vote no.
Ms. Porterfield?
Thank you. Well, of all the things we discussed, I'm surprised that there's so much conscious conversation about this, but that's a good thing to find out that people are interested in what's going on and want to hear their voice heard. A couple of things have been brought up specifically about the revenue for the golf course, and that one concessionaire would bring in more than other. But revenue is not just what comes in initially, but it's also ongoing. So if there's initial investment, but you're losing customers or customers, you know, because the people have come to speak, I've received letters, emails, et cetera, about how well it's being done now versus how well it's been done in the past, and that this particular concessionaire has increased business there. And that's something we should take into consideration as well, because that is part of the revenue. There was also mention about the RFP process, and it's true that we definitely need to make sure that our RFP process is fair to everyone. There was reference to us using this process or comparing this process to if we're buying, I don't know, salt or something like that. But something like customer service is really up close and personal, as opposed to, you know, something like buying salt or purchasing fire engines or things like this. This is a little bit different. In the RFP, it specifically says that the city will select a proposal that best services the public's interest. And the public's interest, based on what we've heard and the input that we've gotten, that not that the other concessionaire isn't somebody who may do a good job, but current concessionaire is doing an extremely good job. This will go out to bid again, and we can take into consideration a lot of things that were put forth. I don't know that this is the time to, you know, start all over on the RFP process on this particular one, as also has been suggested. So with that, I vote yes. Thank you.
Mr. Erickson?
Yes, on this issue, you know, Lisa has made some really good points. If we had no intentions of changing vendors, we shouldn't have asked people to participate and to bid. There's another company that gone out and spent a lot of time and effort and potentially money to put together a proposal. The proposal was for more money. All the other things that we measure were comparable, and we didn't choose them. I understand, I mean, from tonight and from our committee meetings and the phone calls, we've had lots of people who use the golf course say that the current concessionaire is great. We don't want to change. She has a great relationship with people. You go in, the beer's already on the bar. Lots of reasons why you'd want to keep her. However, we shouldn't be exercising companies and giving them false hope that we actually intend to change. And Lisa was also right in terms of how our RFP process is. The golf committee, a bunch of people that are appointed to a committee to kind of make decisions and have discussions on things pertaining to the golf course, they weren't aware that this RFP was going out. The Parks and Rec Committee, we weren't aware that this RFP was going out. And so it goes out, it gets done, the council votes, and apparently it's the wrong way, so we change course. I think that one of the things we can do to improve things is, before RFPs go out, maybe the committee that it pertains to would have an opportunity to review it and see what the RFP contains. And if there's some points that we think would be valuable to add in, that's our opportunity to do that before the RFP goes out. And it got me thinking, and I'm going to go off on a tangent here, that for the other things that we buy and the other RFPs, whether we're buying a piece of equipment, a fire truck, or a pickup truck, or a dump truck, or whatever, we approve a capital budget based on an estimate. When we look at the capital budget, we say, well, why is it $1 million? And say, well, that's a budgetary estimate, and right now, we don't know anymore until we really dig into it. So we approve a capital budget with an estimate. And then before we get a chance to even learn more about it and see what we need in that product, somebody goes out and puts an RFP together that is based around that estimate. That estimate is generally a high estimate. They're not going to estimate low. And then sure enough, we get a piece of equipment that costs right about what we budgeted. If we were able to catch this at some point before it goes out to bid, then the council will have an opportunity to make sure that we're not putting extra bells and whistles on the goods that we're buying. So I think there's a lot of opportunity to change the RFP process. I think the key is to letting the council know before something goes out to bid or before we prepare the RFP. And this is a perfect example of why we shouldn't exercise people that we have no intention of doing business with. So I will vote yes. I've received a lot of calls from people that are tied to the golf course, saying that they want to keep it this way. So I think in terms of listening to our constituents, it's valuable. But I feel sorry, and I apologize to the other folks that participated and didn't get selected.
Mr. Riggi?
Yes, just quickly, because this can go on forever. I agree with everyone here, with everyone had to say here. The process is kind of messed up as far as RFP goes, but this is a service. It isn't buying this pitcher here, and we're going to put a bid out on who's going to sell us the pitcher at the best price. It's a service, so it's a little bit different. And I agree with Ms. Parazzo that maybe it just should be a long-term contract, and it can be ended by either party at a certain point unless there's a problem. That could all be written in. This is something that people are very happy with. There's no question, there's a really outpouring of people. I wouldn't know any of these players if I walked into them right now, who's involved with this. But I do know that all the support that's come out for the people that are running this concession now is really great. And I guess if we're going to go with the RFP all the way, we could have somebody, let's say the person that's running the concession right now has been doing a lousy job. It's terrible. Everybody's complaining about it, but they bid more, so then should we give them the concession? So this can go on and on and on, but everybody's made real good points tonight, but my mind has been made up about from the get-go, just from what I've heard from the people that are using this service, and they're all very happy with it. I vote yes.
Ms. Brucker?
Yes.
Ms. Blanchard's absent. Ms. King?
Aye.
Motion is carried, 5-1.
Thank you. All right, we will now move on to privilege of the floor regarding city business. I have 13 people signed up to speak. I'm going to start with Marva Isaac.
Madam President, Madam Mayor, and council members. Well, I just, last Thursday was my Neighborhood Association Christmas Party, and I just want to thank a few people. Councilman Vince Riggi, Councilwoman Porterfield, and Ferrari, Mr. Ferrari, that provide the food, and Mr. Nix from Carrabas that provide all the food, and lots of other people that came. Y'all missed a very great party. Y'all should have been there. Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah Rembert?
Hello. I'm Deborah Rembert. I live in the city. I wanted to announce the fact that I will be having a stamp meeting tomorrow night at 6:30 in the Machaste Room in the library. Please come out. I am here to talk about, I asked Councilman Riggi to find out about some information for me the last time I was here, about landlords, how these landlords are allowed to rent apartments that are inadequate, such as the refrigerator door handle being broke, and they're telling the new tenant, too bad. Just take it the way it is, because the old tenant broke the door handle. That is not acceptable. Mr. Riggi did speak with Eric Shillings, and I think all of you got a copy of the information that Mr. Shillings had to say, which was not acceptable, because he's stating that basically, these landlords are allowed to do this until they get a new tenant in the apartment. That is ridiculous, because when you go to look at the apartment, and these landlords are allowed to show these apartments without a certificate, their certificate runs out in 30 days after the other tenant leaves out. It's a very sticky, complex situation. And when the new tenant moves in, the landlord can very well say that the new tenant did the problem that was previously done, and accused the new tenant, and then that could end up being a problem for the new tenant when they go against the judge, Judge Liola, in the court system. That can harm that tenant. So what I'm saying is this, these landlords should not be allowed to show these apartments without a certificate in hand, because by them showing this apartment, and there's no certificate in hand, they can accuse tenants of doing wrong deeds that they didn't ever do. Okay? So that's what I'm wanting, and then what he also says, what Mr. Shilling says in the end is, needless to say, this is a massive task to get this situation under control, and try to get to a high compliance rate that would allow more comprehensive monitoring of the landlords, renters, and conditions of the buildings in the city. We are way outnumbered just by four housing inspectors for the whole city. You need to change that. Thank you.
Thank you. Clarence Terry?
Good evening, Madam President, Madam Mayor, Council. I just wanted to bring up, two weeks ago, I was in here, and I gave history of what's been going on with my house, 981 Strong Street. I'm just here to let you know that I have a $20,000 refinance mortgage in place, and I'm asking the City of Schenectady if they would accept $20,000 in lieu of $28,000 on a property that has not, the city has not received any taxes from this house since 1999. I bought it up and bought from ATF $90,000 worth of back tax leads. And I got the property in the latter part of 2011, 2012, '13, are personally my responsibility to taxes, and I'm not disputing the 2008, '09, and '10 taxes that are also due on this property from Ms. Judith Wells, who I bought it from. But I'm asking the City of Schenectady if they would not remove the tax leads, but if you would have some leniency on the penalties, so that the $20,000, and the property is going into an escrow, a 30-year refinance escrow, where if you don't know what the escrow, the taxes each year for the 30-year period are included in that to be paid. So I just asked the city if they would kindly ASAP grant that the city would accept $20,000 so me and my family can enjoy our home. Thank you.
Thank you. Diana Terry? Okay, thank you. John Waltrus?
Hello, thank you for letting me speak. I am a former teacher with the City of Schenectady. I taught art for 23 years and recently retired. I have developed an interest in recycling, and I would like to I have developed an interest in recycling, and I would like to ask the council to consider what is going on with residential recycling in the city. I wrote a proposal here that I'd like to give to you, and basically, what it says is that we have lost the political will to fine people for not recycling, so that I think what we need is an incentive program. And an incentive would reward people for recycling. And in order to do that, we need to identify who these people are. So what I'm advocating in the proposal here is that we adopt some kind of recycler identification program, which could be done with something like a barcode on the recycling bin, such that if the trash pickup guy empties that recycling bin, it's scanned, and the recycling event is recorded. What this could do is it could allow tenants to have an account for recycling, so that tenants would have a reason for recycling. It could even be a teenager. So that the landlord doesn't have to have a hard time getting them to recycle, the tenant would have a reason for recycling, that city could make it worth it to the tenants by, if they show a constant habit of recycling, never mind how many tons they recycle, but just that they, the pickup man says, "Oh, this recycling bin has enough in it," unload it, and give them credit for a constant habit of recycling, they could be given an incentive by the city. And that's basically, and then there's a volunteer organization, Schenectady Recycles, that could be out there also promoting this. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, Tony Benome?
First of all, I wanna congratulate you on letting these people run the concession. I'm not a golfer, but I know an awful lot of people that are golfers, I see them down the mall, and they said, "These people have to stay," so I wanna congratulate you on that. Secondly, I'm gonna go toward you, Mr. McCarthy, nothing bad. If I drive the wrong way down a one-way street, I get a ticket. I go through a red light, I can get a ticket. Go through a stop sign, I can get a ticket. I cross a double line to take a left-hand turn, three cars back, and go in a side street, I can get a ticket. People on bicycles don't get this. I missed last meeting, but a month ago, I left the meeting here, and I'm coming out of Broadway, waiting for the light on State Street, and the light changes, and I'm starting to go across, and all of a sudden, someone on a bicycle's coming up the hill from under the bridge, went right through the light, I almost hit him, blew the horn, and the guy, "You?" I said, "Don't you look at the lights?" He says, "You and the lights." And then I was going down Union Street by Broadway again, bicyclist coming from State Street, crossing over Union Street, I had the light, and I was going, never stopped, I happened to see him, blew the horn, he just kept on going. Is there something we can do about these people on bicycles? I mean, we've gotta do something, because they can get hurt. Well, I hit him with my car, it's my fault, and they could die, just like a car accident, of people getting car accidents. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason Plank?
Madam President, City Council, Mayor Potem. One of the things is, is that every year in January, we come up with an RFP for the Community Development Block Grants. Every year, you say, "Oh, we wanted to start the RFP process, we wanna be able to have a say into it." Well, here we are, in the middle of December, no RFP process, and no talking about it. You know, this happens every single year. We also, too, is that you guys had voted for $500,000 to go to a developer, and you got a $3 million loan. You're saying $100,000 of that is gonna be paid for out of the sales tax agreement, and $56,000 is coming out of the Community Development Block Grant money. Which category is that coming out of? You know, that's a good question that we need to find out. Is that gonna be $56,000 out of the 15% category, which means now, the services that you're giving throughout the community, the nonprofits, are they gonna receive a cut, so that way that $56,000 can be done? Where is that $56,000 gonna come out of that budget? You know, those are some of the things that we need to take a look at. We also have to look at, over a year ago, we had our 20 hours per week affirmative action person said, "Oh, there's no minorities, no persons with disabilities whatsoever at the Erie Boulevard contract. There's nothing I can do about it." Anyway, she's the affirmative action officer, and she's not gonna do anything about it? $13 million of federal money went into that project, and not one job, not a job for minorities or persons with disabilities. You know, we need to take a look at this, of how we're actually doing it. Our fair housing, you wanna tear down buildings and so forth, where's our fair housing plan? Where's our plan of action? You know, these are some of the things that we need to take a look at, that every year, you say, "Oh, Dick's gonna take care of it, Dick Perkins is gonna take care of it, he's gonna take care of it." And we still come back with the same problems after everything else. This, coming up next year, he's gotta develop a five-year plan for 2015, because our five-year plan was done in 2010. So that means in eighteen months, he's gotta come up with a plan for a five-year plan. And we haven't even addressed the jobs issue in that five-year plan. And I know I got a very short time of thirty seconds, I wanna be able to let people know, we got three weeks left, and over 20,000 people in the Capital District area have not filed their STAR thing. You need to file your STAR. There is not a thing that the City Council can do, there's not a thing that the county legislators can do, or the state legislators can do. If you don't file, you're not gonna get your STAR, and you're going to go up. Our city, I think, I think, I think the Gazette did a good job on their editorial on the cartoon. Hey, we're screaming to the heads, you need to let your people know that this needs to be taken place, and that you need to file a STAR, you're gonna lose, because there's nothing that you guys can do. Thank you.
Thank you. Reverend Phil Grigsby?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, President of the council. Reverend Phil Grigsby, City Resident Director of Schenectady and City Ministry. Wanted to mention two things this evening, very briefly. One is to invite people to a time of prayer tomorrow evening at 6:30. Pope Francis, you know him, has called for a day when people around the world should pray for the end of world hunger. For Americans, especially, important to pray together and do so visibly. And we're inviting people to come, one of our congregations, St. Cattery Parish on the Rosa Road site, which is at 2216 Rosa Road, that's the former Our Lady of Fatima site. We'll be heeding the Pope's call tomorrow night at 6:30 PM, and any and all are welcome, and certainly invite people to be there. Secondly, a very different topic, just very briefly to talk about the need for additional appointments to the Civilian Review Board, something that I've been involved with for some time, and you've been involved with for some time, but I understand through several members of the board at this point, that there's a challenge with a quorum, but not because of the interest of the board, the board is very interested, but because of the lack of appointments. And I believe, as I understand, there's several appointments that are either pending or due to be done, and I would encourage the mayor and the council to move ahead on that, perhaps if you have a minute at next committee meeting, be glad to share for part of that, to see where those are at. Some of them may require a small amendment, which I believe may have been offered before, but still could be considered amendment to the ordinance that would say that if a group does not appoint a person or recommend a person, the group doesn't appoint, the group recommends. But if a group that's named in there does not recommend someone within a certain period of time, say sixty or ninety days, then the council and/or the mayor could then proceed with an appointment, perhaps in the spirit of that group, or, you know, reflecting maybe the concerns of that group. But some way, some mechanism, so that the mayor and the council can move ahead on some appointments, but I believe there are some also appointments that are before this body, and so I would invite you to move ahead on that. I know there'll be a transition in the council, obviously, but it's still something that could be done even before that transition. And one, of course, lingering question would be with, John Mudavaren is currently on the review board, with him joining the council, how that gets handled, because otherwise, the quorum in that interim time becomes even more jeopardized. So I ask your consideration and support for the board. Thank you.
Thank you. We will put this on committee agenda for next week. Elmer Birch?
My name's Elmer Birch, from Miss Guna, and I have some materials I'd like to hand out for the members of the council and the mayor, and Ms. Moore, she has an interest in that, if you could give that to the mayor. I'm hoping to get support and some help from anybody who can provide it, council's office or whatever, with regard to some Freedom of Information requests which I've made, with regard to the $500,000 being proposed through the CDBG grant to HUD. If you'll notice, what I've provided to you is my initial request back in September for information about this, where is this $500,000, how is it going to be used, what is it about? And it's $500,000 going to the Galisi Corporation. I didn't hear anything, there are timelines that are established by the Freedom of Information Act, but those weren't observed. I called council's office, corporation council's office, and immediately following that, I was told verbally by the council's office, the representative to whom the initial request is directed, that there were no documents from any officer of the City of Schenectady, which would include the mayor's office, to Galisi or from Galisi, meaning the people who are getting the $500,000. So then I did ask also for the copy of the application made by the city to HUD for these monies, and it was sent to me, I asked just to look at it, because I didn't want to pay for making copies, and it was sent to me PDF on the computer, and it started on page 32. And I said, "Where are the first 32 pages, 31 pages? Why would this, 32, oh, okay." So when I got the other pages, it turned out that the pages that I've included here included very specific information about Galisi, the $500,000, what's being proposed to be done with the $500,000, and also, that he's already made certain investments, presumably, in cleaning up the Knott Street building. So I said, "Well, could I see those documents? What are the correspondence back and forth, you know, where did this come from? Didn't come from Manah?" No, there are no documents. So the last time I met with somebody was with the Director of Development after Thanksgiving, and I said, "Are there any documents that say, 'What is this about?'" You know, background information? And the answer is, there are not. Well, to say that the City of Schenectady has gone paperless does not mean that there can't be any documents around, saying, "You're giving $500,000 to some firm, and there's no, you can't have an agreement yet, because you don't have the money." But there's no MOU or anything with regard to that. My time has expired, Dr. King, thank you, and I hope that somebody can help me. Thank you.
Thank you. Joy Hall?
I'm Joy Hall of Schenectady. I tell you, there's been a lot of these bikers are riding around on the street. I say, "These drivers are coming on the one-way street, wrong way, and we gotta do something to stop this and help these seniors trying to get across the street and put up lights, walk lights up on Mallard Street there, 'cause you got a lot of handicapped people, and you got a lot of senior citizens over in that area. Something has got to be done before anybody else gets hit up there, 'cause the cars come down there racing like crazy, all the way from Union Street all the way over Knott Terrace, all the way down Mallard Street, Broadway, too. I say, "This has got to stop. We've got to stop this speeding crew around here. It's gotta stop now. We've gotta do something about these bikers that are riding all over the street and making it dangerous for everybody else. It's got to stop."
Thank you. Sharon Lynn Schmidt?
Mayor McCarthy, and President King, and City Council members. My name is Sharon Schmidt with the Mount Pleasant Neighborhood Association. I'm here to announce our annual Christmas party, which will be held this Thursday night, December 12th at 6:00 PM at Ferrari's Restaurante, Congress Street, and it will be an Italian buffet. Santa will hand out candy canes, and raffle tickets will be sold for a silent auction. I apologize for the lateness of needing an RSVP, but the restaurant would like them by tomorrow night. I can be reached at 393-2116, or slivinglife, S-L-I-V-I-N-G-L-I-F-E, at gmail dot com. I would like to express my concern over recent developments in Mount Pleasant. As a neighborhood association, we seem to be getting one curve after another in our attempts to reduce crime, and in our attempts to bring in business, and in our attempts to encourage people to move into our community. We support Larry Spring, the superintendent of the city schools, in his complaint to, that he is going to be presenting to the Education Department regarding the inequities in funding. I'd like to state some good news about Mount Pleasant. We had a tree lighting ceremony at which the mayor, thank you, Mayor McCarthy, did flip the switch and turned the lights on, and it's beautiful, two trees at the top of Crane Street Hill. The Christmas wreaths will be appearing in the business district this week, and I want to thank Donna Foley, Pat Smith, and John Horton, who've been our hard workers here in helping to do this. They helped last year, and we're gonna get those out this week. There was an article in the Daily Gazette that highlighted the business district, a school play, and a toy drive during 1968. Talked about Christmas lights being strung along the Crane Street Business District. We're discussing plans to revitalize the business district and go back to that positive energy that once existed. We need people to get involved, to have a passion to help achieve this goal. We've done work in the athletic park, the Little League Park, we're gonna paint their fence with them this coming spring or summer, we're looking for volunteers. Orchard Park is a concern. We are looking forward to having that opened up to the community with some demolishing of some buildings in the perimeter of that park, and we will be continuing our work there this spring. Grouse Park, the Guyanese American Association is working on, and our date for the Mount Pleasant cleanup will be May 3rd. Watch for details of our workshops for all people interested in improving Mount Pleasant to develop plans to revitalize it. All those people have been coming to me over the past year and a half, saying they wanna help. January is your time to come and help. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for all the work you're doing up there. Flora Romanowski?
Good evening. Thought I'd get here early, because it's such a busy time of the season for everybody. This is for the whole public to get on their calendars. I wish to inform the public of an upcoming program being sponsored by the League of Women Voters Health Committee, which is chaired by Carol Furman, and that is important and informative, and which everybody is invited, so I hope everybody can come. It's the health disparities in Schenectady, the next step, how will the community respond? So for your calendars, it's gonna be January 8th, 6:30 to 7:45, at the Machesney Room, main branch of the library, and please join us to hear about the results of the U-Matter Health Survey, as well as other county and state data, which identify health disparities in Schenectady as compared to state and regional data. Hear about the plan of action developed to address eleven of these key health issues. Hear how other municipalities have addressed similar issues. How can we, as a community, participate in this response? How can you, as elected officials, participate? All of you in the public have a chance to brainstorm what could be done locally about particular issues, and you can participate in exciting effort designing and implementing an action plan for the Schenectady community. The speakers are gonna be Erin Buckermeyer, Community Health Outreach Coordinator, Dr. David Pratt, Medical Director, Schenectady County Health Department, and Judy Wrightmeyer, Capital District Tobacco Free Coalition. So I hope we get a big turnout, this has an impact on everybody who lives in Schenectady. And switching, thank you, Kathy Morrison from the Gazette. And switching, thank you Kathy Morrison from the Gazette for that lovely, warm, and accurate profile of the late Catherine Delane. It's really emotional for me because I knew her for years. She worked tirelessly on bringing Vale Cemetery to its present glory. Anyone who was familiar with Ms. Delane was aware of her tremendous work for many, many years. Every time you saw her, she talked about Vale. I remember taking several tours with her, and I was just mind-boggled, impressed. She knew Vale at like the palm of her hand. She knew all the history and the surroundings. I remember seeing her going around town, taking pictures of all the wonderful historic and everything that was of value in Schenectady for her TV programs. So thank you again. She's a real patroon of Schenectady. On the lighter side, yes, it's been quieter in Mount Pleasant, and it's been pleasanter in Mount Pleasant. If I don't see all of you, Merry Christmas to all and to all a good night.
Thank you. Mary McLean.
First, regarding the presentation made by Proctor's CEO at the last meeting. 10 years ago, when Mr. Philip Morris came to Schenectady, the city had a Christmas parade that was traditionally held on the Friday after Thanksgiving. That day was taken away from the people in order to make dates available for Proctor's 1,728 new shows. If Schenectadians could vote to bring back the traditional Christmas parade to the Friday after Thanksgiving and have less shows for Proctor's, tradition would prevail. Much was taken away from them when new shows were added to Proctor's calendar. Proctor's CEO also spoke of philanthropy. He said Proctor's has 1,200 volunteers. Why aren't these paying jobs? A CEO earning a high-figure income uses free labor to run his operation when so many people are out of work. Proctor's also has a monopoly for the wine concession on show nights, and yet council granted permits this past summer for two beer concession trucks that operated simultaneously at two different venues in the city. For the sake of so-called economic strengths, those permits should have gone to the private sector, not Proctor's, a nonprofit organization. Remember that when Proctor's comes calling next year for beer truck permits. Secondly, running for public office. The councilman-elect said, people have a fear to run for office due to negativity. Nonsense. They have a need for medical coverage, and city council gives it to them at taxpayers' expense. The Republican candidates who ran for city council this year had substance. For me, I ran because I wanted the platform to bring Schenectady's government to another level. It won't happen with what is already here. And under no circumstances should John Mutaviran occupy a council seat who, in his right mind, would administer the oath of office to such an individual. What council says here and what council does here will be challenged if need be. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no one else signed up, privileged of the floor regarding city business, so I'm going to declare this portion of the meeting closed. We'll move on to miscellaneous business of the council. Mr. Iggy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll give my little, one thing I have on my wish list since we're coming to the end of the year. I know by December 15th, if we prepay our pension fund, and I know Ms. DiGenova has explained it, but we would save $87,000 for six weeks prepayment. Six weeks. It's $87,000. To me, that's worth doing, but I know we don't want to make our balance sheet look bad, but that's a lot of money. That's somebody's salary and then some. On what Jason Plonk said about the star, let's just qualify, it's the basic star because I know I'm going to get phone calls about people with the enhanced star, especially seniors that are qualified for that. It's the basic star must be done by the end of this month. The enhanced star we have till March 1st. So just so we get that qualified, anybody that gets the basic star, you have to do it. And it almost goes with, we went to a ceremony Friday night where we got certificates for straightening out this, the mess with the not-for-profits and losing their status, but it's almost the same thing. Those organizations were pre-warned to file for that status and, you know, for whatever reason, it didn't happen. Sometimes people either forget, they don't think they have to, whatever it is. With this basic star, you have to. You have to do it if you want to get the exemption. And I'm sure we're all going to get phone calls next year when the tax bill comes out and they don't get their star exemption. But it's clear, this is New York State. This isn't the city of Schenectady that's requesting this. It's New York State's requesting this. They sent out the information. It's also available online, but anybody with a basic star, you have to the end of the month, and that's it. This other gentleman that's come from Strong Street, again, and we've running into this over and over and over again, anyone that buys any property, hire a lawyer if you have to, but you have to do a title search. That's the bottom line. Without a title search, you're at risk. There could be liens from anybody falling on that property, not just the city of Schenectady. It could be anybody falling on the property. The old adage, if it's too good to be true, it is. Well, a lot of times that's what it is. Some of these tax lien companies that have the liens, they don't care, they just want to sell the property. They're not going to tell you, there might be 20 or 30 or $40,000 owed on the property. So I emphasize, if you're going to buy property, do a title search. You have to hire an attorney, probably, and that's okay. But that's what it's all about, and that's why you do a title search so you can have a clear possession of that piece of property without having all these things fall on you. On the holiday note, boy, there's a lot of Christmas parties. Bellevue Preservation is going to have Christmas in Bellevue this coming Thursday, the 12th. And it'll be 6:00 PM at George Westinghouse in Bellevue Veterans Monument Park for the placing of the wreath and the tree lighting by the veterans. Then at 6:30, St. Paul's Church, another tree lighting. Power bill's going to be going up in Bellevue. Then 7 o'clock, there'll be a reception inside St. Paul's Episcopal Church at 1911 Fairview Avenue. And there's going to be, they're going to have games, live music by Cathy Decatur, games and prizes, so it'll be a good time for all. They're also requesting donations to help homeless animals at the Animal Protective Foundation, 52 Maple Avenue, Scotia, New York. So that'll help the animals. So anyhow, that's what's going on from this neck of the woods. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Porterfield.
Thank you. A couple of people came today and talked about bikers and pedestrians in terms of the lights, and I think that is something we need to take a look at. During the time when I was campaigning, that was actually one of the things that was brought up about us not having bikes at Old Lanes and about pedestrians not being able to cross the street. And recently, I was crossing the street, started when the light actually came on, and I got not quite all the way there, and it changed. And I'm pretty able-bodied, you know, I'm pretty quick-stepped. So I can't imagine what it is when seniors are trying to cross the street and the lights are just going so quickly. So that is, if that's something we could take a look at, especially at crossings where people, where there's people are crossing a lot and you have a lot of seniors crossing. So I really think that's something we should take a look at. Also, I would like to acknowledge the passing of a world leader. Nelson Mandela, as we all know, has passed, and he was a great man, and he brought a lot to this world. And so he will be missed, but he has a great legacy that will live on. So I would just want to acknowledge his passing and his life. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Perezzo.
Just one quick announcement. The Minority Contractors Technical Assistance Program, also known as MCTAP, is offering a free business seminar on Tuesday, December 17th at 6:00 PM. Topic is insurance for contractors and small business. It'll be presented by James Dick of the Merriam Agency, and it's great information for new businesses, startup, and existing businesses. So again, that's Tuesday, December 6th, excuse me, Tuesday, December 17th at 6:00 PM at the MCTAP building on Albany Street.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? No? All right. Mr. Mayor or Mr. Winkler?
Thank you, Madam President, and apologize for being a few minutes late. At the Paul Mitchell School, their graduation tonight, and just exciting to see the young students who've spent some time in downtown and going out on their career. Could just recap the 108 loan and some of the activities keep coming up. We're dealing with distressed property here every day. People haven't paid their taxes, they haven't invested in the property. It drives up the cost of the city doing business, and it has a negative influence on the adjacent property in the neighborhoods. Our police department's responding. We get catastrophic events when we have working fires in the buildings and look to ways of how can we deal with it. Looking to use the 108 loan program through HUD to obtain $3 million. Of that, we would use $40,000, we go for the community loan fund to encourage small businesses in the neighborhood. Half a million dollars would be used for demolition of the Knott Street Old Department of Social Services. I find it interesting, then everybody supports the other demolition, the building on Broadway, everybody's in favor of demolishing that. Oh, why don't you take it down tomorrow? That's a privately-owned building. The city probably gets stuck with the cost of that. Look at the Oak Street Bridge, everybody's in favor of fixing that up. That's privately-owned, that's CSX. And if we're able to rehab, that's going to cost $2 million. Most of the houses that we're dealing with, in fact, I think all of them originate with private owners that just have not invested in them. Now, the Knott Street building was originally a school, public building. It was then the Department of Social Services. It was built in the late 1800s. The cost of renovating it or doing anything with it is dramatically shifted because of the lead-based paint that is in it and the large amount of asbestos that is in it. So we've looked at that, doing the rehab, the cost estimates are from just under $1 million to just over $1 million in subsidy to make the numbers work in a fair market deal. The deal that we have moved forward after much discussion and going forward is to demolish the building. But to demolish the building and put up a new building, it still requires approximately a half a million dollars in subsidy. And that's what we're trying to line up so that we're not leaving just another piece of urban blight there. So it's, I find it humorous how people focus on that. I ask people, anybody who has a better scenario can do it cheaper, they can look at it. And Mr. Birch raises his hand, I approach it with some level of humor because everybody has looked at it. You know, they talk about Union College, there's some former president of Union College who said, oh, the college was going to buy it. Well, the current president and the team looked at it and said, no, we're not going to have anything to do with it because the numbers do not work. So we're moving ahead with a plan to deal with that and to deal with the worst of the worst property. The 108 loan will not solve all of the problems of the city. We are still looking for other funding through the land bank and other mechanisms to give us the money to eliminate the urban blight that exists. We've got a lot of interest in this community, been very fortunate putting together a team of realtors and bankers who want to write mortgages here, who want to invest in property. And it is a broad-based, long-term strategy. And so, you know, I appreciate the support of the council, I appreciate the dialogue and the discussion that is ongoing, and I appreciate the community leaders that have come out, stepped up to look at suggestions on how we can do things better, how we can improve our neighborhoods. And I tell people, it's not something that is going to happen overnight. This is a long-term, slow, systematic process that will get the community back to where we believe it can be and should be. More happier known, I want to thank everyone who came out on Saturday for our open house here, the Holiday Festival at City Hall on J Street Downtown. We had the horse-drawn carriages, there were entertainment, the tree lighting, singing, and it was a little bit colder than last year. We had pictures with Santa Claus, but again, hope everyone enjoyed it and enjoy their holiday season and wish everyone the best. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. If there's nothing else to come before City Council, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Pardon?
Sorry, Mr. Winkler. The comment about the concession process. We followed a process to get the council a recommendation, which is followed by New York State, it's followed by many municipalities in the country. Any process that you use is not perfect, it never will be. We certainly could do improvements on it, like adding notification to the council about certain steps. I'd be happy to work with a council representative to develop something that you folks can live with. So if you want to come up with a contact person for me, I'd be happy to work with you.
Okay, thank you very much. On that note, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Iggy, seconded by Mr. Erickson, all in favor? Aye. We are adjourned.
Dr. King, I would point out that my ask for...